Every time I sit down.
All right, everybody, we'll get going. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam?
Here.
Gannaway?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Chapler?
Here.
Ormsby? Stoltenberg?
Here.
Here. All right, we had minutes from the last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the September 21st meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the meetings of September 21st, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, good evening and welcome, everyone, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We are a recommending body appointed by the city council and mayor to review matters of site plan, zoning, and land use and such. I see a number of folks in the audience tonight. Excited to have you here. We're gonna have a little change in the agenda, and I think you're gonna like that. The case I think a lot of you are here for was scheduled towards the end, so rather than have you all sit out there and wait through and have this exciting time listening to the rest of our cases, we're gonna move yours up to number two. So, yeah, no charge, no charge tonight. Anyway, with that, we will begin. So Greg, we'll take their case.
Twenty-two, zero, two.
Multifamily second, yep. Go ahead.
Yes. First case we have is essentially a replating of the Geethman's fourth addition, and also the incorporation of a plat of survey being rolled into this, which will eventually create three lots.
Mr. Chairman, I think we wanted to do, I think we want to do the 2564 Middle Road first. Is that not correct?
I'll just start with the first. We'll take that one second.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah, I've got them both here.
Yep.
The background, essentially, we have a replating, you're splitting off the store right here, the mall area here, and then the convenience store, putting it into three lots as it was originally at one time in the first edition. Fourth edition came by, created a different scenario. What we have is an area that you would expect to see around an intersection of Devil's Glen Road and Middle Road for this parcel. C2 throughout the area, some C3, which is a more intense commercial use than C2 community commercial. Then you have the R5, and then you have a PR overlay district up here, which is essentially an R5 district. Community commercial land use, and then high density, urban high intensity, that is, and then institutional land uses are found throughout this site as well. The area is conforming for the type of commercial use as we see for retail in this area. This is the fourth edition plat, and it was a replat of what were three lots at one time from the first edition. This is a plat of survey that took essentially the convenience store and removed that from the remaining area, which was partially the real, I mean, the Hy-Vee that is here now currently, and then the strip mall area. And this is what is being proposed as Geethman's fifth edition. Lots one, two, and three, convenience store lot three, which essentially will have access, a shared access here onto Middle Road, and then there's a shared access, or I should say, shared access to Devil's Glen Road, then Middle Road. Lot two, which is exclusively coming off of Middle Road, and then lot one, which will also be coming off of Devil's Glen Road like lot three to some extent, with two different accesses, and then a, an area here for vehicles to come through that are servicing the Hy-Vee store. There's also an access agreement, an access easement agreement, for all these lots, and a lot to the west, which is AAA Court Office Park, second edition, for a parking lot area. So there's the circulation that is maintained throughout this entire subdivision. Utilities are throughout the entire subdivision. This is the original site plan from 2005. This down here is the site plan specifically referenced for the convenience store, and there's a number of utilities that are coming off of both the streets. And then the internal areas are served by sanitary and storm sewer as well. The storm sewer essentially is grandfathered in for purposes of detention. A cross easement agreement has already been drawn up, and that'll be required to be recorded at the time that this plat goes to the recorder's office. Staff looked at this site, noticed that there had already been two plats approved. The site meets with the comprehensive plans' goal C, to attract and retain business and industry. Staff recommends the replating based with the following conditions, that the, of course, approval of the final plat does not waive any state, city, or federal provisions required by law, and that there are also any carryover conditions, mainly regarding easements from the past additions are kept in effect by this plat that are necessary, and then all easement agreements are to be signed by the relevant parties and recorded as the same time as the final plat. So we're recommending approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication and presentation?
No, sure.
Nope. All right, thanks. Questions and comments from the commission, please?
I have one question.
Yeah.
You mentioned the parking area to the west. That's not included in this. Is that a separate plat? It's not?
That's, yes, that's AAA Office Park. It is the second edition, and it's a separate lot. There will be, in the agreement, maintaining that cross connectivity, because the employees tend to park in that area and go to Hy-Vee, so we want to make sure that that circulation is maintained, that nobody is isolated or cut off.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, just for clarity, I don't remember where exactly we left it, or if it had been proposed and then pulled back, but was there any change in the site plan for pickup and delivery area in the Hy-Vee lot? Did that get tabled?
That, I believe, did get approved, but that, there is nothing per se in this that is being impacted, because it's primarily within this lot here, which will be the, it'll be on lot one. So there's nothing really per se that it's carrying, it's connecting, or straddling any of these lots.
Okay, thanks. Others with the commission with questions? All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case twenty-two oh eight two replat, subject to the staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two dash zero eight two Geethman's fifth edition replant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Twenty-two zero eight two is recommended for approval. Hey, and before I get you going, Greg, there, I didn't finish my thought process, which I usually do, so I apologize for that, but since you, there are a number of you here, the normal protocol here is that I get comment from the commission first, and then we come to the audience. So we'll talk about our case now. Greg will present it for the one you're interested in. And then there's a podium to my right and to your left back there, and if you'd like to provide input, we'll pick you up on the microphone and the camera. So fix up your hair, make sure you look okay for the camera, but we would love to hear your input, really. So when we get to that point, I'll recognize the audience like now, and then we'll get your input there. So with that, Greg, we will take that case.
Mr. Chairman, this is a site development plan for 2564 Middle Road. Essentially, it's located north of Middle Road, east of Spruce Hills Drive, and west of Happy Joe Drive. Site has mainly commercial surrounding it to the south of Middle Road. You have R2 and R1 zoning for single family, but then you have, with this location right here, where this locale is, and this is lot two here, this is all C2 zoned, adjoining some C3 as well, and then C1 further to the east, and then planned unit developments, which are essentially commercial in nature, and then C1 further to the west. Townhouses are permitted use within the C2 district. This lot of record is, already has a future land use of community commercial, which would allow it to be comparable to the C2 zoning district. Also, the urban medium intensity and urban high intensity districts would tolerate a C2 zoning, which would permit the townhouse uses, and then you have public and semi-public types of future land use around the area. To the south of Middle Road again has mainly traditionally been an urban low intensity area of residential zoning for single family. Ewing Betendorf first edition is essentially the subdivision governing this site. You have a means of access coming through here, which is an access easement of 26 feet in width. You also have utilities throughout the entire area that are serving lot number two. Lot one presently is being occupied by the Suites. This is the original site development plan for the Suites building right here, which houses 62 units. At one time, there was a building of 48 units that was anticipated on lot two. That is not the case. Tonight, we were going to look at 30 townhouse units, not a 48-unit multi-story building on lot two. What's important to note as well is there's a shared parking arrangement for 40 spaces on the northwest corners subdivision lot, essentially the bank lot that has been agreed to be used as overflow parking for the development that is within this site. What we have here are 30 townhouse units, three stories in height, space throughout lot two. We have means of access coming through an easement area that comes through the bank, and then also Happy Joe Drive are your two main points of access. This locale meets the floor area ratio requirement, as well as the site area per housing unit requirement. You could have a floor area ratio of up to 400% coverage, which would mean that you could actually have a building that would be four times greater than the size of the lot. In this case, the floor area ratio is 62%, not anywhere near 400%. The amount of square footage of the entire lot, as the denominator and the numerator in this case, or I should say, we're looking at the number of units here, which would be the denominator of 30 divided by the 172,000 square feet. We come up with 5,733 square feet per unit. The required amount is a minimum of 3,000 square feet, so that is in excess of about, what, 2,733 feet per unit is being provided by this subdivision. So it's over that limit. I mean, it's essentially providing more space per unit than is what is required by almost, in this case, 100%. And looking at these units, you have a configuration of three or four different types of townhouses at three stories. And this is the side view essentially here. This is the rear view, the garages, and potentially some deck overhang on the back. The utilities are throughout. They mainly are spaced along this drive easement area. There is also a water main utility easement along this area here that provides for water service, and then the storm water utility. Essentially, the water will be conveyed to this area, and then will be conveyed back to the outlot. I'll go back to the site plan. There's an outlot X right here, where all the regional detention will be conveyed back down into this area. You've got a provision for landscaping, and we do require, again, that the landscaping be kept out of any easement area, so this will have to be kept out. And then these dots represent the trees that have been planted here. There were only five trees in the interior that were required on this particular site, given the nature of the site. There have been an agreement in the past about cost sharing. Also, there is a traffic study that can be initiated, basically with the discretion of our city engineer. He can make that determination at such time as there might be a full buildout on all three lots. He can correct me if he would like on what the agreements are, because there have been a number of things that have transpired, but this is a resolution, at least approving a cost sharing agreement between the bank and then the other parties involved, and that includes the city as well. We did have a response to questions coming from the, some of the residents, and we did, I believe, hand out some responses. I might just quickly toggle through these, and the parking requirement was met with two spaces per each unit. And you have an overflow of 40 parking spaces adjoining, but they did meet the parking requirement. All they're required to have is two spaces per unit. The drive area is paved. That is, clarify the responsibility for shared snow removal and repair and maintenance. There already is an agreement regarding that, for the 26-foot wide ingress egress easement that was assigned back in the development of the first portion of this project on lot one. And there's also agreements between, let's see, yeah, basically keeping the access open, which is one thing we want to maintain for emergency purposes. As to the buffer, there will be no buffer. There is no berm, because both of these parcels, everything inside this subdivision is zone C2. There is no requirement for a buffer in that instance. The retaining wall, I asked that question of the city, of the engineer involved with this project. He said there will be no retaining wall required, given the size or the nature of this lot being somewhat on flat ground. As to the nature of this, we have not had any word from the developer that this will be federally or state subsidized housing. The only thing we have review of anyways is the townhouse use on site. That is a question that will have to be asked by, or answered by the engineer or the developer switch homes. As to the difference in proposals, the proposal you see tonight before you is the one that is going forward. The other proposal, which we've seen as well, is not being considered by this body. And again, the density requirements, we're seeing a reduction in the number of units from what had been proposed as a multifamily building from 48 down to 30, and we already went over the floor area ratio and other requirements. Lack of area and green spaces. They are providing what is required per the supplemental development regulations, open space on lots, and also landscape and buffering standards. The development of the Middle Road address. This address is bound by prior agreements that were part of the subdivision when it was originally approved, as well as the past site plan, but also this property does not encroach on the Suites property. They're two distinct properties, parcels, that can be conveyed under different ownership arrangements. So this does not in any way encroach on the Suites lot of record. The line of sight issue had been addressed in the past. Somebody's concerned about the line of sight from the Suites. This is something, again, what we govern in the interior is basically through fire code and maneuverability. We do not have governance over a private drive within a subdivision that is not right-of-way, that is not built to a city standard. But this issue had been asked, inquired about before, and it was addressed at the time when the other, the Suites was approved. Now, in terms of vehicular storage, vehicular storage long-term is permitted in a C2 district. However, there can be restrictive covenants placed on the parcels, and there might very well be, I didn't dig into some of the details on this end, but the restrictive covenants or other storage and screening standards may restrict the types of things that can take place on site. As we go through this, someone wondered if it was an experimental project for the city of Betendorf. No, it isn't. It's being governed by C2 zoning. This is not a planned unit development. It is not a, any way, a different type of zoning than what is the conventional zoning that has been used for the Suites. And then, in terms of what will be the price of the units, again, this is a developer question that they will have to answer regarding the rental rates that are being charged. Staff, in looking at this proposal, with the recommendation here, the request meets comprehensive plan goal D, which is to provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods. Staff would recommend approval, again, with the five conditions listed here. We have the understanding that no city services shall be provided to this site. No trash removal by city, snow plowing, private drive maintenance, or repair will be undertaken by the city. There will be no replating of lot two. What you see is what you get right now with this condo-type arrangement, given that this area does not have access to right-of-way, and that would require potentially issues regarding our subdivision ordinance in terms of the number of units accessed. But no tree planting, again, permitted in easement areas. And from our perspective, the private drive must be maintained as accessible, and it has to be kept in a state at all times that our emergency response personnel, if they need to get to some residents within the subdivision, that they are able to do so. And the other thing I might add is, again, our city engineer will determine the parameters of what is needed for any modification, such as an extra lane, or any traffic hardware, or anything of that nature, coming forward as a result of any traffic study. Staff supports or recommends support of this proposal. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, Greg, that was a lot. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mark, anything other than what's been presented or published?
Mr. Chairman, I did provide you a memo that I think summarized the many questions that were submitted. I think we had, we had 10 questions, and that memo was our official response to those questions. And I would just enter that into the record, if you will, and I would be glad to go through that with you. I think it's really important that those questions be answered. People are here to, to learn about this project, and they did have specific questions. I would handle it however you wish. I could read through that memo. We could put it on the overhead. What's your pleasure, sir?
Well, I think if we, if we put it up, and then maybe you could guide us through it. Greg covered quite a bit of what was on the list, but he went pretty fast, and there's a lot in there, and there might be some things. And if you've got particular questions, as Mark's going through, just hold them, and we can catch them back at the podium. But let's take a few minutes and go through that, because there's a lot in here that we can chat about then, and may clear things up in some existing questions. So that would be great. Mark? Yeah, I know. You move it slow, see which way it goes. That's good. That's why you drive looking forward and set out the rearview mirror, because you just can't figure out which way you're going. Can that blow up at all?
It probably can't.
You changed the lighting.
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Maybe slide it a little over. Yeah, that's pretty good. Oh, yeah, now we're cooking with gas. Looks pretty good.
Perfect.
Yeah, you're hired.
So if it pleases the commission, I'll just go through these.
Sure, please do.
I'm sorry to have it be such a long presentation, but I do think there are a lot of people who have these questions being answered. So question one was, does the site does not appear to have adequate?
Can you move the mic over a little so they can pick you up?
I apologize for that. The site does not appear to have adequate parking for visitors. Will our lot be used? The way staff did the analysis, the requirement for two parking spaces per unit is met on the proposed site development plan, so that is met on their own property, not using any of the cooperatives' property. There are, as Mr. Beck pointed out, 40 spaces for overflow parking that are part of a pre-existing agreement, kind of on the northeast corner of the bank lot, that would be available for overflow parking as well.
And so just a footnote for that, from my recollection of it, when we looked at these site plans originally, when they were proposing a phase one and a phase two of the buildings with the 48 units, I think it was, for the second phase, we looked at the parking and said, you know, is there enough parking out there? And one of the things that was, was determined, or ultimately agreed upon, was that there would be overflow parking available up at the bank. So that had, was contemplated originally. Whether it's actually used or not today, I don't know, but that was there for the benefit of both your building and future development. So it was contemplated to have overflow capacity up there. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Question two that was proposed to us was site access. I'll read the question. Site access uses the road owned by the Suites. Clarify the development's responsibility for shared snow removal and road repair and maintenance. This is a great question. Access to the site is provided by an existing ingress egress easement. That's been recorded separately. That document is recorded at the Scott County Recorder's Office, and there's the unique ID number. I won't read that off to you. But what that document says is the, is the road in question is really a private access point that is shared by these properties. That was negotiated prior to this, and it goes forth with the land, so anyone who owns that land also enjoys that access. It does have provisions, again, not involving the city. It does have provisions for shared.
Privately negotiated.
Yes, sir.
Obligations.
For shared expenses for striping and plowing and, and, you know, those types of maintenance concerns. I would invite anybody to look that document up. You can find it on the county's website. I do have a copy at city, or at my offices. I'd be happy to email out to anybody that contacted me as well.
Okay, thanks.
Question three, I think Greg did a good job answering this. There is no buffer between the Suites property and the development. Can a berm be added? A berm is not contemplated in the site development plan. Staff is not recommending one, nor is one required per our code. We're a C2 use to a C2 use. That's community commercial in this case. So when, when we see two similar uses, two similar zones next to each other, we typically don't have berms or buffers required, so it's not something staff is recommending.
Yep, okay.
Question four, will there?
Can you slide that up there a little bit?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Get this thing down. I'm remembering my algebra class in high school. Question four is, where will the proposed retaining wall be built, and how high will it be? I think we did cover that in the presentation. There's really no retaining wall shown on the site development plan, and we don't anticipate one being built.
And the general feedback there is that there's no grade differentiation that would require one that we're aware of.
Yeah, that we're aware of. That's correct. Question five, we're halfway home, folks. We understand that the development will be rental property. Will it be federally or state subsidized? Really, project financing is not in our purview. We don't review that as part of our zoning analysis. It has been shared with us that it is just market rate rental property, but that's not something we have any controls over, nor do we conduct review of that as part of our zoning analysis.
Yep. And if the developers here can answer that question, that would certainly be one that you could ask. I don't know who the developer is, but if he's, I'm seeing somebody nod back there. He's shaking his head yes. So, okay, go ahead, Greg, or Mark.
Question six, what are the actual number of proposed units, 30 or 36? I apologize for the typo on my notes here. The Switch Homes website is different than the submitted proposal. Again, great question. Is the density appropriate, given the size of the site? As planners, we like people who ask these kind of good questions. It helps us think through projects. So 30 units are proposed. I think Mr. Beck mentioned that the only thing that is going to be reviewed and/or approved by the city is what is on the application tonight before you. So if you see marking materials, or you see other things, those are not something we're reviewing and not at play here. So this application is the only proposal under consideration for this site. There was a previous site development plan for a different style of unit that is being replaced by what's being proposed here tonight. So the, the, I think it was a memory care, 48 or so units of memory care that is going away. The petitioner is changing that out for this. I would note that should this go forward and be approved by city council, if, if the developer wanted to change course, do something different, that would require this process to occur again. So a new site development plan, I would qualify that with a material change. You know, a small change here or there certainly is not significant, but if we have a material change, that would be something that would have to come back through this process. Question seven, there appears to be a lack of recreation areas and green spaces. Again, while we understand that concern, we have to review it based on the law of the city. The proposal does meet the open space and buffering standards under 1111B-12 and 11-12 of Betendorf City Code. So basically, the spacing is appropriate between the buildings. The density is appropriate per our code. It does meet those requirements. Just gonna make sure I'm staying on.
And which, just as a footnote, again, Mark, would be the same requirements that the original development was under, as far as amount of green space and all that kind of stuff. That was, the same standard applies to this development as did the original.
Yeah, the, the city code has not changed recently in that regard.
Correct.
Question eight, the development has a Middle Road address. If the address is 2564 Middle Road, based on the property owned by the Suites, will they provide us compensation for their use of our property? I think this kind of goes back to that access, egress access. I think that's been answered before, but again, I would refer people to that document. It was put together during the early parts of the development.
No toll booths. Yep. No toll booths. Yep.
There's concern about the, the sight line when exiting the development toward Happy Joe Drive. The entrance slash exit from our garage is not visible from the proposed exit due to a sharp corner. We are concerned this will create a substantial accident risk. It's my understanding that that was a part of our previous analysis for the site plan that created the co-op and would have allowed the 48-unit memory care to go in place. So that, that has been reviewed and approved by this body and city council. That location and the way, the arrangement of that intersection, interior intersection, I will know, not a city intersection, private intersection, if you will, has already been addressed. Are we on number 10?
10.
We made it through. Great question. Will trailers, campers, or boats be allowed to be parked or stored within the development? Technically, you could have one. One is allowed per residential lot. This is one residential lot, so one would be allowed. I would be surprised, just given my experience in life, that the property owner would allow that. Usually that's taken care of in the lease agreement or other covenants for these types of developments. So I can't really speak for them, but would be surprising to me.
Which would be the same case for the existing building, and I don't know if there's any covenants or restrictions in the co-op units relative to RVs or campers or anything like that, but as per code, city code, one would be allowed.
Right.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you for that. All right, good. All right, with that, we will come back to the commission for any questions or comments regarding this matter. I got one regarding the shared cost agreement, and I'm looking over at Brent.
Yes, sir.
So originally, that had a couple three parties to it. It was the original developer and the city. And now we've got the original developer, a subsequent purchaser, and the city sit to go from 50 to 50 to 33, 33, 33, or?
There were several iterations. They went back and forth before the final agreement was actually signed. It actually ended up being a three-party agreement.
Okay.
So it was the city, the original developer, or their assigned, so this current property owner. And then I believe North, correct me if I'm wrong, but the owners of Northwest Bank and Trust actually ended up part of the agreement as well.
That's right. It's essentially the city has 50% of the obligation for any traffic infrastructure that would be required under this cost share. So the, the city is at 50, and then the owners of the, the Russell Ewing parties, which originally it was, and then any successors, including potentially this developer, would be 37.5% of that 50%. And then 12.5 was for Northwest Bank, who developed where Hungry Hobo was. So the city is at 50, and the private, the private developers are at 50. And then between those, so it's, it's essentially, it got a little convoluted because there were different parties involved.
Okay.
But the city is at 50, and that's based on the traffic study that, that Greg mentioned. And that's, there are caps as well for the private developers, but that has been all contemplated and is pretty, pretty well set forth in the, the two agreements that we have that would, would be binding on the, the owner of this property.
Is there any on-street, I know it's private streets in there, but is there any on-street parking internally in this now?
Not currently because they have their off-street parking lot.
Okay.
Now, not to say that the proposed addition could potentially allow that on their private streets. We would not have the ability to regulate that.
Others with the commission, questions or comments? You guys are too easy tonight. All right, here goes the audience. So anyone that would like to, you got your hand up first? You get to go first, young man. So just go back to the podium.
Yep.
Yep. Tell us who you are and then tell us everything you want to tell us.
My name is Darrell Paul, and I live at the Suites of Baton Rouge. I, I think I don't have as much to talk about as I thought I did because you did a great job pulling down that list. And maybe this isn't stuff for planning and zoning, but we, we are going to share, and we have it now, but there's a retention pond on, I don't know if it's Lot, Lot Two or whatever, that's going to be shared with Switch Properties. There is no fence or anything around that pond, and I don't know if we have small children in the Switch development, if that's going to be a concern or if it's been addressed at all. And I don't know if that's a-
I can tell you, sir, there is no requirement from the city's end to fence detention basins.
Okay.
Ultimately, it comes down to individual, either homeowner associations or individual properties if they own it and their insurance companies.
Okay. And then another concern that we had is there going to be an onsite property manager at this development? In case we have trouble with skateboarders or whatever, we don't want to have to call the city or something that-
Well, I, I see the developer nodding his head, but he's going to, it looks like, take the questions down and probably address them when you get done asking them.
Okay. And, oh, there was, and maybe we just misunderstood, but there was some talk at, at our facility about one of the light poles will have to be moved or done away with, that's kind of between us and the, the new development. I don't know if that's a factor or whatever, but we were wondering if it's going to be, have to be moved, if it could be moved closer to where our garage is. It's really dark down in there, and if, if it's got to move from the edge of the parking lot, if we move it north closer to where our garage is, we'd all be happy.
I'm going to put that on the developer question, too. Since this is an internal private property deal, all those, I'll call them more granular details, would be subject to negotiation and discussion with the owners, developers. So I'm, I'm putting that on the developer answer it list.
Okay. Well, that might be all I have unless somebody else has something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Darrell. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Barbara Paul, and my initial job was to just make sure that we understand the facts correctly. And if we don't, we would like that to be explained to us. And we already know now that it's 30 units. It's rental property. We were under the standing it was non-subsidized, but we would like clarification on that. We're under the understanding that they're all three stories with a double garage in the lower level. If we're wrong on any of this, we'd just like to know. We also thought that the rent was going to be somewhere between 1,800 and 2,000 a month. So we also talked a lot about the access that runs through our property, and we wondered if that could possibly be moved so that it, there are two cutouts, and we wondered if it could be moved to the cutout closer to our garage and then so that the person could see our garage, the people in the garage could, coming out of the garage could see them, and also if there could be a stop sign where they come onto the Suites Drive.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to look at the developer to address those, but thank you. Appreciate it, Barbara. Anyone else? It's free tonight. One of the few things in government that's free here, so, yeah. All right, so it looks like it's time for the developer to come up and answer a few questions for us.
Good evening. I am not the developer, I will say that. I am the engineer, but I am going to represent the developer as well tonight, and he apologizes that he's unable to be here, but he did have a family issue he had to deal with at the last minute. So, but I'm sure he could be here in the future, too, in, in terms of council and things like that. But appreciate everybody coming out.
You got to tell me who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants. I usually don't draw this much of a crowd, so thanks for coming out tonight.
Take it on the road. Here you go.
All right, so I will try to hit on, on these, and if I miss something, certainly let me know. But I, I think most of it has already been discussed and, and explained very well by the city staff, so I appreciate, appreciate that. The intentions are for these to be luxury townhomes that are rented at a market rate. They are not to be subsidized or affordable housing. They are not in partnership with, with vintage, other than the fact that is a lot that was part of the original development of Ewing. The townhomes will be professionally managed and supported by, they already have a well-established facilities maintenance team. In terms of whether that's onsite or not, I do not know the answer to that, but I certainly can find that out. I know there is a local, they have a local maintenance team here. Where exactly they're located, I don't know, but they would be local at least, and, and they would be in close proximity, and I could try to give some additional information on that as well. The stormwater basin, as noted, will be shared, as was originally designed and platted. There has not been any discussion, or I guess this is the first I heard, you know, if, if there were any concerns with fencing, I can certainly take that back to the developer. But the, the intent right now as part of this development was not to do anything with the basin or add any additional fencing at this point, but certainly something that I could take back to him if, if there is a concern or if they have a concern on that. Appreciate the info on the light pole as well. There is one light pole that is to be removed because of the proposed layout, and I, I don't think there's any issue with getting that closer to the garage. If that's what's preferred, we can certainly work through that with you to get that to a preferred location. They are three stories, with the main level being a two-car garage. I will add to that as well in terms of the parking. So you have a two-car garage on each of these units, so obviously you can park the two vehicles there. The driveway length is also designed and made so that you could park cars within the driveway as well, so you could get another two cars in the driveway, so you could have four cars ultimately per unit in hopes that there isn't a need for any additional parking outside of the unit itself. On-street parking hasn't really been discussed or, I guess, intended. It is only 24-foot wide private street, so I would think that's not going to be ideal in this situation, just to keep two lanes of traffic going on the road. And, and certainly, we can discuss signage in terms of that, no parking within those access points. It has to be a fire lane as well. So again, I don't, I don't believe there would be any on-street parking, and we could certainly talk about making sure there's no parking signs added. Additionally, along the signage side of things, stop sign here, you know, at the access points would be no issue as well, and we certainly add those also. I don't know the exact rate, other than it's, like I said, supposed to be luxury townhomes at a market rate. The 1,800 to 2,000 a month, I, I cannot verify, but I would say, based on what I know, that's probably in the, in the right range. And then access points, I mean, everything's designed currently for a reason in terms of where those access points, so I, I don't think that's intended to, to switch where that access point would be. But again, certainly not a problem to add a stop sign to try to help address any concerns with that, that sight line and sight distance there. Let me see, what else? You know, green space, I think Mr. Beck coined it well, we're actually well above and beyond what is required on this, and, and I know he has some intents to do additional landscaping and/or even, you know, little amenities within, as, as I believe Mr. Beck has the plan up right now. You can see we have some, on that south side, I'll call it, between the units to the east and west, is kind of a, a square, if you will, of open space, green space, and there's other, you know, other areas. Well, this, this is pretty low density for the overall acreage that was discussed earlier, but I know the intent is to utilize that landscape that well. They want this to be a very nice-looking, again, luxury townhome area. So we'll continue to develop that as, as we go with them in terms of any additional onsite amenities aesthetically, landscaping-wise, on the open space and green space. Oh, and then, yeah, again, with the trailers, campers, RVs, yeah, they have no intentions, you know, on, again, it sounds like one could be stored there per code requirements. There's no intention for that, and I, I'm guessing, again, I'll speak on behalf of the developer here, that if, if so needed to put in a covenant, that that's not to be accessed or utilized as storage for an RV or camper. I don't think he'll have any issues with that because that is, there's certainly no intentions there for that. And again, really no space for it either with, within the units and the, the street itself. Am I missing anything? Did I hit it or anything?
No, I think you did a pretty good job hitting him. Anybody think of anything he didn't address? You had questions on?
Yeah, if there's any other follow-up, by all means, let me know.
We would welcome having your developer come in and address this as a group.
You bet. Yeah, I could certainly let him know that. Yeah, and Matt Mulligan is the owner of Switch Homes, and like I said, typically likes to be at all these. Was not able to do it tonight, but I could certainly let him know that. I, I'm guessing he would have no issues with that, and, and hopefully he would be able to be here at the, this goes on to city council to be at that meeting as well.
Right, and just a footnote on that, and I'll get you guys, you can go up to the podium so we can catch you on the, on the microphone, because we record that. We want to make sure we get everybody recorded. But this, this is a recommending body, so we don't have final authority here, but we send the recommendation to the city council. Most of the time, they agree. That's occasionally they don't, but most of the time they do. But that is the final authority for this, and there will be a notice in a public hearing or a city council meeting to have the final say. So, yes, sir.
I'm Glenn Hitzkeis from the Suites. When do you plan to break ground?
Yeah, I did check in with them today. Right now, the intent is spring of next year, spring 2023. That has not been completely set, but to my knowledge, certainly wouldn't be, you know, any earlier than that now that we have snow flying on the ground here in Iowa. So, but yeah, as of right now, I believe the intent is still sometime, probably late spring of 2023, next year.
Okay, thanks. All right, last call for the audience. Okay, Anne, you had, oh, did you have a question? You're, he's leaving. I don't know. He's going to go over there. Okay.
Nick Bachman, Phil. The covenants within the, the addition as such, who writes the covenants within that? And do we, for members of the Suites, do we have a say as to what covenants would be in there?
I'm going to defer to legal on that, but-
The city is not party to that. That's a private contract-
Yep.
-that the, the owners of, of Lot Two would, would be responsible for. If they, it sounds like the owners, the, the developer is, you know, willing to talk to you, as, as Brian mentioned. So if, if you want to give him your input, I'm sure he would listen, but ultimately, the city's not a party and, and the Suites wouldn't be a party to those.
I just wanted it for record.
Yep. All right, good. So recorded. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else? All right, Anne, you had a question?
Brian, I had one additional question for you. You mentioned the local maintenance team, so I'm wondering if Switch has additional properties here in the Quad Cities? And if you do, maybe you could reference some of those that might help the neighbors understand the types of properties that, that you're building and developing in our community?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. I wish I had a little better answer or detail for you on that. I know they have multiple in Davenport. They're actually building some right now. Those are more, well, the ones being built right now are more residential homes than townhomes. A lot of Switch Homes derives from Dubuque, Iowa area. They have some work in the Iowa City Cedar Rapids corridor as well, but majority of it is in Dubuque. They are, have been doing more work here in the Quad City area, and in particular, like I said, Davenport and Baton Rouge. So I, I don't know if I have, I'm trying to think, exact location in terms of a townhome type unit, but I knew, I do know over, like in Prairie Heights, there, I have residential over there in Davenport, south of Veterans Memorial, and I could certainly try to get some additional information on that as well.
If you have the opportunity to meet with the neighbors in the future, that might be something they would be interested in.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, almost closing time. Last call for the commission, last call for the audience. Okay, let's have some action in the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion for approval of case number 22-087, subject to the recommendations that the staff-
I'll second.
Okay, we have an and one and an and two with a motion and a second to approve case 22-08- 22-087, 2564 Middle Road Site Development Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 22-087 is recommended for approval. So this is when all you guys get to sneak out.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, that's great, too.
No, no, you didn't sell anyone on it.
No takers. They cleaned out the room.
You're losing everybody.
I am.
Yeah.
No kidding.
You need some support?
Nobody moves up now. Yep, but it could have been a lot. That was Anne's idea. All right, we're almost ready. Okay, Taylor, take it away.
All right, so we are on item, we are on item five, I believe it's numbered on the agenda, now six, I think, but case number 22-083. This is a final plat replat of named Devil's Bluff Second Edition. The commission may be familiar with this. This is the 1,200, formerly 1,200 Devil's Glen Road. This is, the applicant is Dave Kempin. He's requesting to replat this subdivision into two lots. It is currently one lot. Just a brief background, we've got approved rezoning the past year here, approved site development plan, and approved final plat. The site development plan includes 12 attached single-family townhomes, and then 100, that's and then we have multifamily units as well. I don't think that number's correct, though. This zoning is R4, medium-density multifamily residence zoning district. This is located in the urban medium intensity on our future land use map. The Devil's Bluff First Edition, or the current plat, is one lot. It transferred previous easements that were recorded and other agreements that were recorded with the property. It also dedicated right-of-way on Devil's Glen Road for a turn lane. This all shown is the first edition. The Second Edition, or Devil's Bluff Second Edition, transfers everything from the First Edition, all easements, all language as far as notes go, the dedication of right-of-ways as well, but then plats these, the ground into two lots, and the lot line can be seen here. It also adds a 35-foot ingress easement, so allowing Lot 2 to have access to Devil's Glen Road on a plat, and also has a blanket parking easement for both Lots 1 and 2. To visualize this with the approved site plan, here's a layout with an overlay of the buildings as approved, recommended for approval by this commission and approved by council. Here's the three apartment buildings and the townhomes. So two buildings will be located on Lot 2, one apartment building will be located on Lot 1 with the townhomes. The applicant's primary purpose of this replat is to separate these lots for separate financing. It's pure and simple. The analysis as far as zoning goes, if these lots still conform with our zoning ordinance, bulk standards, that includes our setbacks, our bulk standards for density are still met, hence the kind of jagged lines. Those keep all those in compliance with our code. All previous site plans and agreements and conditions set forth by city council are still effective and remained unchanged. So this is, this will not change any physical appearance of the site that have been reviewed by this commission. This is purely a plating request. So with that, I can take questions, but I will say, this plat, as submitted, is material matches all previously rezonings, site plans, and plats that have been submitted to the city and approved. So staff recommends approval of this case 22-083, Devil's Bluff Second Edition final plat, and I can take questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything? Word, Mark. There he is. He moved to me. He's good. All right, questions or comments from the commission regarding this matter?
I do have one.
Okay.
This is kind of off the wall. As far as you know, Taylor, is the plan, so we have two separate lots, but is the plan to develop the property fully at this time, or as soon as it can be completed? Or is it going to be done in phases where maybe Lot 1 is developed, since the financing is separate, and then Lot 2 is developed?
I can't speak exactly to the developers' plans, but currently, the building phases have, I mean, their grading has started.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of work there.
The, I know there's right-of-way that has to be built, so there's different phases in that regards, but the phasing would go from west to east, just because of the layout. But as far as Phase 1 and 2, or Phase 1, 2, and 3, I do not know, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot in that question as far as market and material costs and such.
I wouldn't have thought of this question if we hadn't just had the conversation that we just had about the previous case. So what came before us was a development of one parcel of land with two buildings in the previous case. Okay, so one building was built. Now, the second building is not being built. The parcel's been split, and it's being repurposed. So now we have two parcels here. If part of this is built at one time, perhaps that could create some question or problem or confusion later if the second parcel gets sold off and something different comes.
Any, any change in the approved site plan, a material change?
Right, it has to come before us.
Substantial would have to start at the beginning as far as the site plan approval process, and that would have to look, go through the analysis for zoning compliance and so on. So that, I don't know if that answers that question. Now, the length and time of that site plan, as far as, that's something, I believe that's official, or effective is, we don't have, yeah.
Right, till things change. I'm thinking about decisions we've made in the past that looked good at the time we made them, and then fast forward and look back, and things look different.
We want to make sure that Lot 1 has, if, it is going to be separated, I mean, but it, that's the access easement it has. We have parking, cross-parking easements, so it protects, if that scenario were to happen, it could, it still is by itself effectively developable.
It's a very simple request for a very legitimate reason. Just because of the conversation we just had, I looked at this a little bit differently.
And it opens the door for a lot of different alternatives once it's changed like that, yeah.
But we would have the opportunity to review it.
Right.
Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't this a conditional rezoning, however, though? Weren't they tied to materially the same site plan?
And that's where I'm going, yeah.
So going back to what Anne has talked about.
It's a package.
It's a package.
Yeah.
Not necessarily that they have to finish it.
Right.
But if they did make a change, then it sets off a whole nother.
Yeah, as opposed to the previous case, whereas, Taylor, you both acknowledged, there were two separate lots from the very beginning.
Right.
And so here, the conditional rezoning was on one lot. We're now splitting that into two, but there would be several points where it would have to be, we'd have to come back to this body and to the city council.
Yeah, okay.
That's a really good question, but logic courses, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, we looked at that development up at Cumberland Square. Wow, this is awesome. They're gonna build two buildings. They're gonna, yeah, and now, what if this not happens?
It is similar to the, was it the first case we looked at? That was developed on, well, initially one lot, I believe, and now it's becoming, so it's, it's, yeah, there's similarities.
All right. Thank you for indulging me. I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay. Anyone else with the commission regarding this case? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-083, subject to staff recommendations.
I would second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-083, Devil's Bluff Second Edition Final Plat, Replat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Thank you. 22-083 is recommended for approval. Okay, Taylor?
Okay, the next case before you is 22-071. This is a final plat replat named FG80 Holdings Third Edition.
Hey, and just for administrative clarity, too, I think what we're gonna do is take that case by itself.
Sure.
Present that, we'll make a vote on that, and then present all of the next four together, and we'll vote on those, since they're kind of collective, if that makes sense.
So we have a, we're looking at a replat of a final plat, and then within that final plat, we'll be looking at some site plans, so I'll go over the final.
The way you bundled it.
Yeah, the final plat first. Applicant is Kevin Kellner. This is a request for a final plat replat. This was previously platted, a part of this was previously platted, is FG80 Holdings First Edition. This is the Betplex, or the TBK Expansion, east of Middle Road and north of Forest Grove Drive. The uses are going to, of this Third Edition are going to be commercial office, commercial retail, hotel, and restaurant. As I mentioned, there's a number of related cases, cases tonight, 72, 73, 74, 84. The zoning is C3, that's our general business, and the future land use is community commercial. This is the First Edition, so this, there are portions of this that are still there that have not been replatted, and we are considered, we are looking specifically down here, I'll call this the island. This is going to be west and south of Competition Drive, which is a public right-of-way, east of Middle Road and north of Forest Grove Drive. So we're looking at the northeast corner, the general location, northeast corner of the intersection of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive.
Southwest corner of the northeast corner. Okay, I'm with you. All right.
This, so the First Edition had five lots. This is the whole large acreage, so we're looking at replating, well, let's look at that plat, it's easier. We're looking at replating, creating four lots, four new lots on this island. One lot, it will still remain in the First Edition, and that is the northwest corner of this island. So there used to be two lots, Lots 2 and 3 of the First Edition, and they are being subdivided into Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Third Edition, for following. All proposed uses are going to be permitted, are permitted in the C3 district. Sewer and utility easements are shown for each replatted lot. Stormwater will be contained on outlots located north in the FG80 Holdings Second Edition on those outlots. So north, not on this page, but over here. This is the First Edition, but the Second Edition, I believe, has an outlaw here. We have an outlaw here, an outlaw here. Okay. These, access will be provided with private drivelanes. There will be two curb cuts onto Competition Drive. One will be located here, and the other on the border of Lot 3 and Lot 4, so those two marks. And then you have private drivelanes with parking for the developments. There also has a blanket access easement between all of these lots and Lot 4 of the First Edition as far as interior thoroughfare. Believe it's covered it all for the plat, I'm trying to divide the plat and the site plans. I don't think, Brent, do you have anything to add?
None on the plat.
Okay. With that, staff contends the submitted plat meets all city requirements and recommends approval of FG80 Holdings Third Edition. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Mark, anything?
No, more to come. He's got several on the same site, so.
Understood. All right. Questions or comments from the commission? Nope. All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, back to the commission.
I move to approve case 22-071, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-071, FG80 Holdings Third Edition Final Plat Replat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Okay, thank you. 22-071 is recommended for approval. Okay, here comes the big one, Taylor.
Hence the heading. Okay, I've combined our, these four site plans, which are on four lots, four buildings, actually, and these are cases, case numbers 22, 072, 073, 074, and 084, located in Lots 1, 2, and 3 of FG80 Holdings First Edition, 1, 2, and 3, Third Edition, typo, and Lot 4 of FG80 Holdings First Edition. So, familiar with the area? We have two applicants. Kevin Kellner is the applicant for Lots 1, 2, and 3 of the Third Edition, and then Joel Jackson, Bishop Engineering, representing McDonald's, is, that's the Lot 4 of FG80 Holdings First Edition. As I mentioned, four buildings on four lots, located in commercial subdivisions. There is one more lot left that we will have to, this commission will review in the, sometime in the future. That's Lot 4 of the Third Edition. It's not part of this review. The proposed uses are office, retail, and restaurant, fast food. Zoning is C3, and all these proposed uses are compliant in that district. Future land use is community commercial, and these meet multiple goals of our comp plan. Just to remember that I mentioned in the previous case that we have access points off of Competition Drive here, or curb cuts here and here. So Competition Drive is going to be public right-of-way, maintained by the city. Anything, any interior drives then will be maintained by the developers and for future owners, and that includes drivelanes, parking lots, and sidewalks. I'll start with the first site plan, so Kevin Kellner submitted three site plans for three buildings. You can actually view them all here, partial, partially. The first is Lot 1, located in the southwest corner. This is, the proposed use is an office, possibly medical office. There is a review of the parking. We have 64 stalls for this, based on this square footage, 40 are required, so they have more than required. There is one vehicular access point right here. The dumpster is located on the northwest corner of the building. We have sidewalk connections to the, to the public sidewalk network located in the right-of-way on the southwest corner of this lot. And then staff had one recommendation, and this will be, I'll revisit this as well, but due to the one access point, we would recommend a service walk located somewhere right there, five-foot sidewalk that would connect the parking lot and these two lots, so if there have two dual purposes of just increased pedestrian connectivity, but also for any type of emergency response, they can have a clear walk for, say, a cart or any other movement. Otherwise, they would, you can pull into here, but there, some backing out would be difficult. Okay, and then I can go through each one, and then we can kind of revisit them as you see fit. There you go. This is the landscaping plan for Lot 1. We have the trees shown. There's a total of 14 and a half tree factors. This meets the minimum requirement. This meets the minimum requirement. They do have a unique, like, outcropping of limestone in the corner, which will be kind of a center point or a corner point of the, near the roundabout. Moving on to Lot Two, this is the center building right here. Proposed use is retail. They're showing twenty-nine stalls, twenty-eight are required based on the square footage. This has multiple access points fronting it. There is a shared patio located right here on the lot line. I will know any future uses, which are going to have an outdoor service area with alcohol, would require a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. There's also a sidewalk connection on the southwest portion of this lot, right here. I think that covers that. Landscape plan, total fifteen tree factors are shown. This also meets our requirement, and I did mention the dumpsters are located in the northwest of the building. That covers for Lot Two. The third lot, we're looking at this building right here. The proposed use is, I believe, mixed and restaurant, I should note. But restaurant is one of the uses. We have seventy-two stalls, parking stalls, fifty-three are required based on that restaurant, mixed square footage. Multiple points of vehicular access are shown. We have a dumpster location right here with a access for a truck or backing in. I believe this is also a concrete paving. And then we also have sidewalk connectivity, too, actually, located right here and here. And then there's this entrance point that I mentioned. So this will align to the entrance to the parking lot of the golf complex, of one of the entrances. And you'll have multiple lanes for left, left straight, right, and then an entry, entering lane as well. And this is Lot Four, which I said we weren't reviewing tonight. Conceptually, it's a hotel, but that's all we can really kind of plan for, so just put that there. Here's a rendering, kind of the, the buildings will entertain a similar theme as far as facade is the golf complex. This isn't a requirement by any means. This is in a character area, like our downtown overlay district, or our Utica, our Utica Ridge overlay district. But just to give you an idea what we're looking at for this building, and the others will look similar, I imagine. We have a landscape plan, twenty-six and a half tree factors are shown. This meets our requirements. And we have some buffering of the dumpster area from the driveline, which is good. All right, moving on to, this is Lot Four of the First Edition, so we're in the northwest corner of our island. This is Case 2284, and this is the McDonald's. So this use is a restaurant, fast food. And that's our, per our zoning code, fast food has a little different requirements for parking, based off its customer service area. That would be, make it twenty-nine required, but they're showing fifty stalls, so much higher. It's got two points of access in the north and south. We've got a dumpster location on the southeast of the building, and it's enclosed. We have sidewalk connections located here and striping across the drive area. We also, I can move on to the next slide, shown, this is the, the parking lot layout and the drive-through layout. Kind of unique to this McDonald's is we have some, I believe, four forty-two-foot bus stalls. So this is located near Interstate Eighty. So those, those parking amenities are provided. The drive-through striping is two lanes and then merges into one for the pickup, but does provide a total of eighteen vehicle stacking. The stacking lanes are striped so that you could bail out of them. The only area, I guess, you could not, would be the order window right here. The drive, the thoroughfare, the maneuvering is one-way striped, so traffic within the parking lot will be going counterclockwise and angled parking. And to note, the striping for the drive-through does block in some spots, but the, this will be always moving, the, the drive-through lanes should be. And then the ADA spots are located behind or north of the, the striped, drive-through lanes. Landscape plan for that lot, McDonald's, total of thirteen tree factors are shown. This is the requirement for our landscaping handbook, and most are located on the exterior, so Middle Road and Competition Drive. Couple renderings, as mentioned before, the buildings are kind of, have a similar theme of colors. So we've the all north, east, south and west views of the building. All right. I can give the staff recommendation for each, and then take questions that, or which, how would you?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So for the first, 2272, that's Lot One of the Third Edition, we are recommending approval. This is the first condition we are recommending with conditions. The first condition is a service walk being installed between that Lot Four, the McDonald's, and Lot One. The second condition is not specific service walks, but in general, to provide interior pedestrian service walks between areas where to be, could be trafficked by pedestrians. So these would be short, like, walks connecting parking lots, so you could walk from lot to lot. We have outside coverage with the sidewalk, and we have connections to that sidewalk along Middle and Forest Grove and Competition. But in between the lots, staff would like to see some proposed connectivity. For the Lot Two, as mentioned, we are recommending approval. This is 22-073. Any outdoor service area with alcohol, with alcohol service would require a Board of Adjustment, special use permit. And then with the same conditions said before, with the interiors, service walks be provided. The, let's see, Lot Three, Third Edition, also shared, it has patios. Board of Adjustment, special use permit required if that's going to be used for alcohol. And then the interior pedestrian service walks for connectivity. And last, 22-084, McDonald's on Lot Four of the First Edition. That service walk, as mentioned, connected to Lot One of the first, of the Third Edition. And then the general condition to look into providing any interior service walks. I can take any questions.
Well, that's a big one, thank you, appreciate it. Mark, anything additionally?
I just want to highlight a few things because there was so much presented.
There was.
Really liked the idea, and I think the developer is going to work with us on these interior walkways, just what we're trying to create here. There is a partnership with the city, just in the overall development, and having this be a walkable area for lots of reasons. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of kids going back and forth to games and hotels and, and some great amenities, so we really want to highlight that.
And I totally support that concept because it, in the existing use on the west side, you see a lot of pedestrian movement back and forth to the cars and to the restaurants and all those things. So there's a lot of people movement, and that's only going to accentuate here, so I think it's spot on.
I would note, it was covered in the staff report, I would note that each of these lots is individually self-parked, so they're not relying on other lots to meet their parking needs. That is a point of, to note. We would also note that if there's ever patios or outdoor service areas that include alcohol, obviously McDonald's isn't going to have that, but others might. You know, you do need a special use permit for that outdoor service area. Not that the one's being contemplated, just good to know going forward.
McDonald's in Germany has beer.
Oh, well, there you go. He got me with that one, okay.
You never know.
And then there's an opportunity here, and this is ju, just really for a conversation. This is not a stat, this is not a city requirement, there's no code requiring this. But I think this would be a great spot to have some additional EV parking, electrical vehicle parking. I think the marketplace is probably to take ca, care of that. I think it's happening on the other side already, through market forces, people are requesting it, and I've seen them putting them in. Just seems to make a lot of sense to me. This is a great destination, I suppose, there's going to be more and more cars on the road, and we could have some there. The city can't require it, I'm just putting it out there. If we can be helpful, we will be, but I just think those are, those are things that are coming.
If there's three thousand parking places between the two sides of the road, somewhere in that zone, right? And you got five percent, right? That's a hundred and fifty that you would need, five, five percent.
Yeah.
And that doesn't line up with where the government wants us to go, so, yeah, big need there. Yep, good, thank you, appreciate it. Questions and comments from the commission regarding this case, or these cases? Can I ask, it's, it's, it's relevant here, but it's also elsewhere in town, and I encountered personally, and I'm not sure how the protocol is, and I'm going to look at Brent for this one. So when I go for a bike ride or a walk, and I go to the Fifty-third and Middle Road Roundabout, nobody, I won't, I won't say never. Five percent of the people will stop when there's a pedestrian, the rest will plow you down. What is the protocol for pedestrians at a roundabout? Because I can, I can see a lot of future pedestrian connectivity activity here. What's our traffic plan? What's the answer for how the driver should be addressing pedestrians when they come up to them, they're standing at a crosswalk in a roundabout? Do the pedestrians yield to the cars, or is a car to yield to the pedestrian? And how do we teach people what to do?
I don't know if I can actually answer the, the legal one. I, I kind of wish Keith was here, so he could tell me whether it is.
It's a challenge.
Additional, just, we do plan additional signage. You know, all the crosswalk signage, we're probably going to end up with, we haven't gone there yet on the three roundabouts that we're going to be building out there, or the, the four. The rapid flash beacons are really becoming, so that's the rectangular light bar that also has the crosswalk sign. It's all lit, LED lit. We've got a few of those around town, specifically at the schools. I think in general, yes, the pedestrians have the, the right-of-way, but the, the issue is that it's a yield condition. It's not a stop condition for roundabouts, it is a yield. So it, it may come down to just some additional public awareness, public.
I think it's something to put on the radar, because it's, it's a challenge, I know for me, and I, I couldn't tell you what the exact rule is. I mean, sometimes when I'm brave, I'll put up my hand, it's like, I'm going, I need a break. But that's going to be an intense group of intersections up there, and I think if we had some collective way, we knew we were approaching it, so we could at least, you know, whether it's yield to pedestrian or not, or the yield signs on the pedestrian side, yield to vehicles somewhere, so it's clear would be beneficial. I know from at least my own experience, so that would be one comment from me.
And that's compounded because we're going to have so many people from out of town.
Right.
Who may not have experienced that kind of traffic pattern.
Run over, here's twenty bucks, run over to McDonald's, yeah.
Just to add to your question, the only point that pedestrians are going to be encouraged, is that the walkover? Or is it going to be?
There is crosswalks because the, the, the roundabouts will be in before the bridge. So there are crosswalks at basically all the legs.
Okay. Sorry.
No, good, but strap on it, yep. Others from the commission regarding this, or these cases? Anyone in the audience regarding any of these matters? Wow, okay, back to the commission. Should we take these one by one? Yep, all right, so we'll take two, three, four and eighty-four in that order, if we could then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-072, subject to staff recommendations, the site development plan. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-072 Site Development Plan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. 22-072 is recommended for approval. You're on a roll, Ian.
Okay, I'll move for approval of case 22-073, the Site Development Plan, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-073 Site Development Plan, Subject to Staff Recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 22-073 is recommended for approval.
I move to approve case 22-074, Subject to Staff Recommendations. I'll second.
Okay, the two hands. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-074 Site Development Plan, Subject to Staff Recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Case 22-074 is recommended for approval. And the last one?
I move to approve case 22-084, Subject to Staff Recommendations.
I'll second.
Nice. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-084, Subject to Staff Recommendations for the site plan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Case 22-084 is recommended for approval. And that is going to be a golden opportunity for the golden arches. Yes, yes, yes. All right, good. So that takes us to the next case.
Thank you, Chairman. Case 22-088, this is a preliminary plat proposal, named Pierce Subdivision. The applicant is Scott Pierce, Blue Water Group. The, as mentioned, request is for a preliminary plat, so this is, just looking at it kind of a concept. This area is located southeast of, or east of Valley Drive, right near the intersection of Valley View Drive. The, the property is outlined in green, and is currently in ag use, and I believe it always has been. The plat is proposing four lots, three developable, developable lots and one outlot. And the proposed uses are industrial contractor condos, industrial manufacturing, storage. Shown here are the zoning and future land use maps. This area is zoned, in our, located in I2, General Industrial District. And the future land use is also industrial and has been for some time. We do have, on the opposite side, or the north side of Valley Drive, we do have residential A2 and A1. So it's our rural agricultural, sorry, rural residential zoning district, and our agricultural zoning district. We also have some R1 farther north. The site is also located in the Pigeon Creek Flood Plain. Most, almost all the site is located in the one percent, either the one percent, which is our Hundred Year Flood Plain. And then there also is flood, the regulatory floodway, which is along with the creek. Just one small area in the center of the site is in the Five Hundred Year Flood Plain, which is not, we do not regulate. But any development on this site will need approvals, so we do floodplain permits for fill. Any buildings will either need to be raised or put on fill, that which are, so to meet our floodplain regulations. No development or fill can be placed in our regulated floodway, which is the striped area along the creeks that creates any rise in elevation. So if there is any action or development taken, it cannot, it needs no rise certification. So given all those conditions, staff is recommending the, the applicant submit a, recommend, is recommending a comment letter from FEMA. So these are called a conditioner, conditional letter, that just gives comment on a proposed development, make sure that's meeting all of the guidelines. It doesn't have any approval, it's just a comment letter, and helps staff make sure we're meeting all of the floodplain requirements. The proposed subdivision, this is a, as mentioned, a four-lot subdivision, so we have Lot One, Two and Three. And then the fourth lot is an outlot retained for stormwater detention. The subdivision proposes dedicating a right-of-way, so for a public street, that street is located here. So this aligns with Valley View Drive. This is the residential subdivision, Dodd's Valley View Edition. So it's Dodd's Drive, I believe, or Dodd's and Valley View Drive. This would end at the lot line, so this, there's three lots located in that farm area. But any future development, if it were to occur, that lot, that road would then be extended further southeast, and then all the way to State Street, providing improved access off Valley Drive. But this road also provides access, sufficient access for fire and just. But this road also provides access, sufficient access for fire and just general industry to these lots. And then lot three would be accessed via private drivelanes, and that would be reviewed at the site development plan phase. We do have a concept. This is just very preliminary, so it doesn't totally align with everything in the preliminary plat, but you can kind of get an idea of what the applicant is proposing. So on the north, which is lot three, we have the contractor condos. That is what the developer is proposing. And then on lot two, I believe is the, the headquarters of business, a manufacturing business, and I might have gotten those two mixed up. And then the sec, the lot one building is a related material storage, I believe. Like I said, the concept is preliminary, so this is just kind of gives you an idea of how this, how the buildings and the layout would work. There needs to be some changes as far as the private, the access points to the public street, and there's, and stormwater detention, just to give you an idea. This is a rendering just of those contractor condos, just conceptually. So that's kind of what they're proposing, so they would have a garage door and man door and be available for, and we have similar developments around. With that, this is preliminary plat, so this is just being recommended to council for review and will not give any approval for a final plat. Just allows us, allows the applicant to move on and do their diligent, due diligence for a final plat. But we recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Pierce Subdivision with the following conditions, sufficient access easements be shown for lot three for those drivelanes, so it's not landlocked. Any future developments require local floodplain development permits, so, you know, our floodplain regulations. And then recommending the applicant apply for that letter from FEMA for any, just kind of a review to assist us in making sure we're following our floodplain regulations. I can take any questions.
All right, Taylor, appreciate it. Mark? Nope. Okay. Questions or comments from the commission in this regard?
I'm not familiar with a contractor condo. Can you just give me a little bit more information about what that would be?
So from my understanding, and I could use help if anybody wants to fill me in, but they are rented out for business owners that have, like, say, a small contracting business, and they have, like, I believe they have a bathroom, very simple layout. They can store equipment there. They're not generally used for storefront. They're just used as a very small contractor space. That's.
For example, if you have, if you have a person who's maybe a landscaper, and they have, you know, have a couple trucks, and they have two or three guys that are gals that work for them, they may use a contractor condo to locate their business. Carpenters, plumbers, people kind of for hire that work in the trades often, when they're working, definitely need these type of spaces, and that's what they're used for.
Okay.
There's similar type uses of.
Down in that area.
Yeah. Bear Tooth Court, some of those, others right down there, there's very, and some they lease and some they sell as a condo. But both seeing, yeah, typically small commercial contractor type units.
Thank you.
Others from the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter?
Good evening. Chris Owens with Republic Services. We're actually the business right next to the proposed lot there. Will the commission require, engineering require study of traffic before they move forward? I know one of the concerns with the three schools in the area, the middle school, the high school, and the college, over the course of the last 19 years that I've, I've been there with the company, the traffic has gotten considerably more traffic, especially in the morning and in the evening with the school buses and stuff traveling. You know, how would that be affected with these businesses?
I'll look to Brent for traffic.
So the, the initial development would not warrant it. The actual site plan that they're going to bring forward is not this entire development, is just two contractor condos. Is all they're going to bring forward. And part of the, the traffic situation, I think, that we're talking about is why we're also requiring them to dedicate the right of way through, because traffic has gotten heavy on Valley, also because there's only one really way out of Valley at this point. So we have, somewhere in the long range plan will be another connection from Valley to 67. We have right of way at Criswell, basically next to the Mid-Am substation that's through there. PV Ready Mix currently has a lease with us to take their driveway, but that is actually city right of way. But we would like to get a second connection through here as well. And if that is able to ever go, obviously that's dependent on the two parcels south of this one, because they're only buying the, the north parcel here. At that point, then a traffic study would most likely come in, because then you'd probably be looking at, you know, potentially stop signs or maybe even a traffic signal at one of those locations in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Nope? Yeah, they're way back in the back there. Okay. All right. Back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case number twenty-two dash zero eight eight, preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two dash zero eight eight, Pierce Subdivision, preliminary plat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Twenty-two zero eight eight, preliminary plat is recommended for approval, which takes us to our last item regarding the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can handle that one. We'll probably just let him clear out here for just a second, and I'll go over with you. And I don't have a formal staff report, because this is really just taking language we already have in our ordinance and putting it somewhere else. So it's going to seem like maybe a little bit of paperwork for the sake of paperwork, but a few years back, as we were starting to redevelop our downtown, and we had the new bridge coming in, we realized that our downtown was not going to be able to park or build parking lots to the point that, or to the, to the level that we would need them under our normal parking ordinance. We certainly didn't want to take down buildings to build parking lots in our downtown. Now, the city did build a few too, to date, public parking lots that are utilized, and we created what was, what we called an interim use. An interim in that meant, in that term or that context meant that we would, on the interim, allow less parking for downtown businesses based on the concept that we have more on-street parking available and these two potentially new city parking lots coming in. Well, those have developed. So I don't think that, and staff would contend that it's no longer an interim, that is now a permanent, and we would take that same language that allowed, allowed the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and recommend to city council, parking that would be less than our normal parking ordinance requirement, and make that a permanent part of our code, not an interim part of our code, if that makes sense. So you see, if you have the document, you'll see 11-3, 11-13, 5C interim uses. That language is all stricken, but then it just comes back and becomes part of 11-13-7A, modifications and waivers to off-street parking requirements in the downtown Mashup Plan overlay district. We just take that language, it's no longer interim, it's something we can do throughout going forward. I will point out that to be allowed to have a waiver by the Planning and Zoning Commission and to recommend it to city council, you have to meet at least 50% of your parking requirement, you have to have all of your ADA parking, and you have to have adequate drainage and safe access. So really, taking what we were doing kind of on a temporary basis, we watched our downtown improve, and now making that, that authority permanent, if you will. And then we also realized that the term interim and temporary uses probably weren't very clear in our ordinance, and we do have, I'm going to use a silly example, the circus comes to town, we may need an interim or temporary parking use. And we would say that that's something that could probably be handled staff at the city administration level, where if we had, you know, again, the circus comes to town, we need to have some temporary parking to accommodate that, we would, we would review that as staff and make a recommendation to the city administrator. That would be no longer than 30 days, and those uses would be, would truly be interim and temporary in nature. So that's all we're doing is taking a power you already had, making it a permanent power, if you will, relocating it in ordinance to a more appropriate place, and then we're just clarifying the terms interim and temporary parking to be something that's only 30 days in, in length, and that could be addressed by staff with a recommendation to the city administrator.
Okay. So originally, it was created in that concept of interim or temporary to accommodate what we knew was going to be future parking. The future parking, parking capacity has been installed, but we still need an ability to have less than the code level of parking on a permanent basis.
Yes. For, for example, we want, we want density downtown. That's what we want our most density. So let's say we have, in a month from now, a case come before you for a new downtown business, restaurant, bar, or what have you. We would not want that business to acquire an adjacent lot and take it down, reduce our density, reduce our downtown inventory to create just parking. So we want to keep our downtown inventory. We don't have a lot of downtown buildings, we want to keep as many as we can.
Right.
And we want to use the on-street parking and let businesses benefit from that, and the city parking lots that the city has invested in and let businesses benefit from that as well. So really, we're just recodifying what we already agreed to do, making it more of a permanent power, if you will, for this board to make, or this commission to make recommendations on and city council to approve, and then also clearly identifying what we may need to approve of any interim or temporary use that is truly interim and temporary. Little semantics there, but I think it was important clarification.
Yeah, for sure. So is this something, any other comments before I charge along? Anyone comments on that? Is this something we need a recommendation to?
It does. Yeah.
All right. If we don't have any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case twenty-two dash zero eight nine, subject to, there is no staff recommendations, other than approve this, so, subject to that.
Second.
Is it twenty-two zero eight nine or zero eight eight?
Mine has zero eight nine.
Zero eight nine.
Zero eight eight on the screen. We'll go with.
My original had eight eight, my updated one, eight nine, so I'm guessing it's eight nine.
Yeah.
We'll go with eight nine. All right. All right. We have a motion, and we had a second to approve a recommendation, case twenty-two dash zero eight nine, ordinance amending Title XI, Chapter 13, off-street parking. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Thank you. Case twenty-two zero eight nine is recommended for approval. And that would take us to any other additional commission updates.
I do have one for the commission.
Hey, Taylor, before you jump into that, Taylor's going to give you a really cool presentation on Be in the Know. It's a great way to find out what's going at P&amp;Z and other committees. But also, in the background, I've mentioned before, we do have a hazard mitigation plan going on. We've talked about it a little bit. I want to bring that, just remind you that that is continuing, and we are going to give you a full update on that.
Yeah, that was cool stuff. Yep.
Okay. I'm sharing for our, Angie Sharp is our, I think she's been here over, a little over five months, and she's been doing a ton here so far, community engagement person. And she has already got something started for our commissions, our board of adjustment, planning, and in city council. It's called Be in the Know. These are ways to communicate on updates for agendas or notices when we put stuff out for this commission's agendas. So if you go to our webpage, one, you can go to a button on our main page and click on Be in the Know. You'll click there. If you click there, you'll have options to be notified by text or by email. Anytime a new agenda, packet, minutes, video, whatever you want, is uploaded on there. So that's one way of being notified. We also have Alert Iowa, which has a, this one you have to sign up for, email and phone number, and it has all different kinds of things you can subscribe to, from Parks Department, from Weather Alerts, Planning and Zoning Commission, everything. And that, and we can send out alerts for that as well. That's been going on for some time, for a few months now, so if you're not, not on it already, I encourage you to do that. And we, and Angie's been posting a lot on our social media pages, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Nextdoor, LinkedIn, also related to certain cases. But these are all new items. It's really easy to do. We're also changing a little bit of how we're, the timeline as far as when we're posting these agendas. We're posting our agenda a little earlier, so no packet, of course, but just the agenda. And that lets people get notified that maybe we wouldn't get our mailings. We're still putting out our mailings, our notices that are required, and we're still posting our signs, but we're trying to get out there so we can get everybody, everyone's input and have everyone in the know on all these cases that they're interested in or they may, might affect them. So these are just some things going on, want to make you aware, and she'll be sharing this over the next couple of months, and this just doesn't relate just to the commission or to our other boards, but to all of our departments as well across the city.
Yeah, great. And I don't know how you do it initially, other than some of these, you know, you click and log on, but I'm just thinking, you know, live in a new subdivision, somebody else moves in when they come to sign up for garbage or whatever. I mean, sign them up, right? You're, you take every opportunity.
And like I mentioned, it's right on their main webpage, and you just click Learn More. And I mentioned, there's the new, the updates for Forest Grove Drive, for the landing, city news. And when you're signing up, there's steps, put your email in, there's your city council, your city news, there's planning commission, there's board of adjustment, email and text. So, and it goes straight to the, our planning page, which has our agenda and our packet for tonight's meeting, and soon tab minutes and video, so.
And I'm really happy to see it's always summer and sunny here. Nice.
Yeah. And they, and I think they are going to be updating some of our pictures, and I believe they even have a drone now, so we'll see some more content across all of our pages. Stay tuned.
Yeah, love it.
The mayor does his Friday message. Has he featured this? This would be.
This is pretty new. I don't.
I think you just gave my topic.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm liking it.
I watch every mayor's message. I don't recall if this one.
Nice answer for the record.
I haven't either, Mark, so I just said that.
All right. Homework for everybody who's listened to all the mayor's messages, okay? Yep. They are actually pretty good.
But I think people do look at them.
Yeah, I do.
It's a good way to get the word out.
Yep. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned. All right. Thanks, everybody.